Ladies and gentlemen, meeting in Revere City Council December 16th is called to order. Join me in saluting the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. If we could all remain standing, please, and have a moment of silence. We had three passings this week in Revere. One was a young lady in Broadway that got hit by a bus, Ms. Johnson, and two youngsters on North Shore Road in an automobile accident. Thank you.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Rigo?
Here.
Here. Counselor Correggio is absent. Counselor Gino?
Here.
Here. Counselor Guanasso?
Here.
Here. Counselor Haas? Here. Counselor Patch?
Here.
Here. Counselor Penta?
Here.
Here. Counselor Powers?
Here.
Here. Counselor Riordan?
Here.
Here. Counselor Zambudo?
Here.
Here. And Council President Novoselfsky?
Here.
Here. Quorum is present. Approval of the journals of the meetings of December 2nd and December 9th, 2013?
Are there any omissions, changes, adjustments in either of the journals? Hearing or seeing none, I'll vote in so order. Before we go on, I just want to let everybody know that Counselor Correggio is not with us tonight. He was rushed to the hospital this afternoon with stomach issues, so we wish him well.
Calendar item number one, report of the appointment subcommittee.
Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the appointment subcommittee met, and we had two applicants before us. The first being the reappointment of Henry Two-Fo to the planning board, and that was voted on unanimously. And the second was the appointment of Lisa Pressman as a constable. That also was voted out unanimously. So I ask that this, wish of this council that we take these both together. If there's any objections, I understand there isn't any. Take them all as one, Mr. President.
Any questions from the councils? On the recommendation of the subcommittee? All in favor? All opposed? Vote in so order.
Calendar item number two, pursuant to Rule 23 of the City Council Rules of Order, the following council orders are being reported out of committee with a recommendation to be placed on file. 13-236 regarding the Powers and Sullivan audit.
Place on file.
Motion placed on file. All in favor? All opposed? Vote in so order.
Council order 13-212, Moody's Investor Service Report.
Place on file.
Counselor Rigo?
Place on file.
All in favor? Place on file. So move.
Calendar item number three, motion presented by Councilors Patch and Powers that the mayor request the Director of Veterans Affairs to install a memorial sign for William C. Flynn, former city councillor and U.S. Navy veteran at the corner of Park and Washington Avenue.
Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. It actually speaks for itself. Billy Flynn was a dear friend, and the family has requested that the, they'd like to have this memorial placed at the Park Ave. in Washington Ave. And the motion just starts at the first step. It's going to Nick Bowe, and hopefully we get it done. Thank you.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. As all of us may know, Bill Flynn was a resident of Oak Island for most of his life. From a large family down in Oak Island, very well-known, very upstanding family in the community. And I think this is very appropriate. It's being placed outside of Oak Island because that's where he was residing later on in life. So I think the motion is very appropriate. Thank you.
Well, anybody else? If I may, I'd just like to say that Bill served with me back in '78, '79 when he was the Ward Five councillor. And we got to be very good friends over the years. And it was very disheartening to myself, and I'm sure the family and everybody else, to lose him. I did talk to his family earlier before this came in, so I'm glad you pulled this off. I had already asked Nick Bowe to pull his DD 214 and to get it ready for a memorial to be determined what location it would be in, so I'm glad you picked the location. And I think he will be proud, and we will be proud. Thank you. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? Vote in so order.
Calendar item number four, motion presented by Councilors Rigo and Riordan that the mayor periodically during the course of the negotiations with Mohegan Sun regarding a new host community agreement, address the City Council in executive session on the progress of the negotiation. The purpose of this motion, with the understanding that the City Council may only advise and has no authority to execute an agreement, is to give the mayor and his negotiating team the benefit of the thoughts, ideas, and experience of the council and to enhance the transparency of the negotiations. This motion also requests that prior to executing a host community agreement, the mayor meet with the council in executive session to provide the details of any such final agreement.
Counselor Rigo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as we all know, we are in the process of a new, negotiating a new host community agreement. And I thought that it would make sense for us to be able to have open lines of communication, given the small amount, the short amount of time that we have to get this done. And the countless years of experience that we have on this council could be helpful to the mayor and his negotiating team. I know we've had meetings in the past over the previous host community agreement, but I think that with the new process coming up and it being a shortened process, we would be, as a city, we would be well off to have constant communication and the ideas of the council being heard. Thank you.
Counselor Riordan?
Thank you, Mr. President. That is the purpose of this motion. I think that we are at a critical stage here. We probably are looking at something that is exponentially more beneficial than we were getting under the old situation. And I think it's really important. And honestly, I've spoken to the mayor about this, and I think he's kind of of the same feeling that, you know, this time around, I think it's important that we give him the benefit of our advice. And that, you know, for a lot of reasons, more than informing us, I think it would be beneficial. And this isn't to say that we anticipate. We're trying to get our thumbs into everything that he is doing. But I think it's important that he give us the benefit of giving him the benefit of our ideas and thoughts on this new agreement. And I think the best way to do it is, of course, an executive session because it is a negotiation. We're permitted to do that under the open meeting law. And I think it would be entirely appropriate for us to be privy to the negotiations prior to the time an agreement is actually formed. Thank you.
Counselor Penta?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I don't disagree with the words that were spoken by the maker of the motion, but I do believe that this is against the open meeting law. I mean, I have no problem the mayor coming up here at the podium and addressing our opinions of anything else, or taking our phone calls, or going to his office. But to go behind closed doors and do this, I believe honestly this is against the open meeting law.
Point of information.
State your point, Counsel.
My point is that I've reviewed, before making such a statement, I've reviewed it. And an exception to the open meeting law is negotiating on contracts and negotiating other things that the city is involved in. And it's specifically stated in the open meeting law. And it's with good reason because once a negotiation has become public, the other side has an advantage. No one, it's not in our best interest to let Mohegan Sun, or Suffolk Downs, know what we're talking about. That would be foolish, quite honestly. Thank you.
I agree. There you go, Counsel.
I agree with that whole heartily. You do not want Mohegan Sun to know what you're thinking when you're negotiating. But I still believe it's against the open meeting law. This was written to take the politics out of it, the mitigation. Totally out of it, for the mayor to negotiate, and then the public decide at the ballot. The public is the next step after the mitigation, not the City Council. So I beg to differ with you. I mean, I'm going to vote against it. Maybe we'll get a legal opinion from the city solicitor.
Well, before we respond to that, Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that personally, I don't see any reason to have executive session. I mean, I know for myself and several of us on the council have met constantly with the mayor and John Fester, either in person or on the phone, we've talked. I think, I understand that the two makers of the motion have a day job. But I mean, they can make an appointment. They could talk on the phone. And I don't like the idea of having a meeting like this and, next thing you know, things get out of what we talk about. And I just, I think we owe it to the administration to just proceed as every other city has and put together a mitigation package. I don't, I don't believe that, I believe we're going to be very happy. I know some of the councils didn't feel we had a very good package the first time, but the people spoke and when they voted. And I think they're going to be, of course, they're going to be very, very happy about the new mitigation package. So I think if everybody wants, I mean, they've come to us. The mayor and John Fester has come before us several times and said, you know, I'll discuss, I'll meet with you, discuss with you anytime you want. And I've used that process. And I know several other councils on this committee has, council has. And I think there's no need of executive session. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I for one feel that the City Council, all of us being elected by the voters of this city, should have a positive and definite input into what we would like to see also in that mitigation package. I mean, I have some things that I'd like to see happen in Ward Five. I'm sure my colleagues in the other wards and the at-large councillors also feel the same way. And I think the other important thing is too, that prior, where this is going to be a short window for voting, prior to that vote, that we get as much information out there as possible. Because when people went to vote the last time around, I talked to several people that really, you know, they were rushing. They didn't have the time to read that entire ballot. So I think it's important that that information get out there, that people know what they're voting for. And the city councillors, again, have input as to what they would like to see because we do represent the people of this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a problem with this motion. I think it's, I think it's an appropriate motion. I don't see any problem with having some input. We're not going to be, we're obviously not going to be in the negotiations. They've been going on since the dictate of a new vote came up. The new proposal, the negotiations are ongoing. In fact, I spoke to the mayor about this motion, and he didn't seem to have a problem with it. So I think that, you know, input never hurts. As long as we're not interfering with what's in the best interest of the city. I'm fine with this motion. I think that if it's legal to have an executive session, I think it's appropriate. And I have to, I have to take the learned attorney's word that he researched this. And so I'm on board with the motion. I think it's a good motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Guanasso?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't see what we're bickering about here. Based on the fact that we're all on board with the, that we want to see Mohegan and Suffolk Downs go forward. And certainly, we want what's best for our community to be at hand. We have a golden opportunity now to readdress and rethink some of the host agreement that we had originally offered with Suffolk Downs. What's so bad about going in executive session and speaking about these terms rather than have a question-answer session in the public? We negotiated this previously somewhat in executive session when we met and we spoke with the mayor individually. So to me, we're not coming to a conclusion. We're putting a proposal for, that we think is best for our city. We're not saying what's best for Arthur Guanasso or what's best for Ira Novoselfsky. We're saying what's best for us, and I think everybody has to have that intention. I don't understand what we're talking about here. Let's go forward. And I think that the benefit of it is the least we do with this bickering type of atmosphere, more of a presence it gives to our community to be in a positive vein for what we have at hand. We're all in agreement. We want this to go forward. So let's do it in a fashion that's as smooth and as beneficial to our community as possible. I don't see any problem with going in executive session. And the mandate of the government was, in terms of political involvement, was strictly with the gaming commission, nothing to do with the city of Revere and other cities and towns. They have to negotiate the agreement for their community. We can't offer it out to 25,000 people and say, here, come up with an agreement for us. That's what we were chosen by those individuals we represent to do. Come up with something that's doable for our city and beneficial to us. That's all we want. And I think now we have a lot of positive things going for us. We have more information. We saw what was given to us before. We had input from the citizens thereafter on what they would have liked to see in that host agreement. Now we can bring that to the table with the mayor and John Fester and to whoever it may be who sits at that table and the attorneys representing us, to give them their ideas, our ideas, and tell them what we heard from our constituents. What's wrong with that? That's all I have to say. I just think, I don't see bram at all with the motion. I think it's a good one, in fact.
Mr. President, point of information?
What's your point, Counsel?
Point of information that I thought all councils and I thought even the citizens have given their input on mitigation. If you haven't, I mean, I don't know where you've been. But this has been going on for the past year or so. The numbers may have risen, but we all gave our ideas and where we want to see the money spent.
Counsel, I understand you saying that.
I just think executive session is sticking to the taxpayer.
You've already said that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We understand. Appreciate your input, sir, Counsel.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you. I believe this is a very well-intended motion. I think that there are definitely a lot of questions that we may have or more input that we may have because it is a slightly different proposal than has been addressed in previous meetings. I'm not sure if executive session is the best way to handle it, but I definitely think that there are new questions that are coming up. And I think that there are new concerns that we have on the council. So I think that some sort of forum would be a good opportunity for us because I know personally, the second I leave my house, whether I'm in Revere or out of Revere, the first question I get is, what's up with the casino? And I think it would be all good if we were on the same page on how to answer that question because we're getting it from friends, from family, from residents, and from people that aren't even in the city. And I think for us all to have a good answer and be able to give input on this would be very beneficial for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, you keep on hearing the word transparency, and I think it applies here. I think we should have the executive session, if that's what it is going to be. There's so many questions out there, people coming up to me left and right and asking me what's in it, et cetera. And I, you know, you don't want to say anything that may not be at the negotiating table. And at this point, at this point in time, I think time is very short. We have to get our act together. We're going to require a vote out there of the citizens once again. And as it's coming about, you've got April 1st when they're going to make their determination. So I for one would like to find out what's going on instead of being in the dark. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. If, can I, you're, put your mic on if you wish to speak, sir. Put your mic on.
Point of information.
What's your point, Counsel?
First of all, it's almost, it's going to be, has to be done before the 31st of December. So if councils haven't told the mayor or John Fester what they want for their ward, which I have already done, if it's not close to a done deal, it's probably, it's probably very close. So by the time we, it probably will be done by the time we even get to have an executive session. So I call on my colleagues to get to the mayor's office or John Fester's office as quick as you can and tell them what you want, what you want for your constituents. Because I tell you, they're very close. So that's all I got to say, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Well, let me put my two cents in. First of all, ladies and gentlemen, this is our last meeting of the year. Okay? Our regular sessions are over. The only way we would call another meeting is if we had a request, an emergency request, such as a request from Mohegan Sun asking us for a date to have the next election, the revote. That's number one. What's in it? I agree with Counselor Penta and Counselor Patch and several others that stated, you know, we've had our input. We spent all last summer writing and before, writing notes to the mayor and John Fester and say what we want to see in the package. I know I did mine. Now whether or not it's an executive session or not, to me honestly, I don't care. You know, I don't really believe it should be an executive session, but I will yield to the majority of the councils. And you have to realize, we can have a mitigation package or a HCA, a host community agreement, done more sooner than later. As was stated, it has to be submitted to the commission by the 31st of December. Right now, nobody knows what's in it other than what we had before. And we know that at least that part is in it. We know that part's going to be in it. We're just adding on more because East Boston doesn't want anything. So we're going to take over most of their package for Revere and what more things that Revere needs. Now, I would say that there's not going to be an executive session. But if there is a request from Mohegan to have a meeting to set a date, that is the time we could find out when our, when the agreement is. And right now, we don't know if it's going to be this, you know, the 23rd or the 30th if we have to call that meeting. So I don't know when the executive session could be held in a regular, in a regular situation. If you want to call it, fine. We'll feel the majority feeling of the council. And right now, I understand it's very close for them to finalize something. So we wouldn't hear anything in between until that signatures, all the signatures were put on the package. So I understand where the councils are coming from. I know they've been pushing for this, to know what's going on in transparency. But in this case, they're not ready to give out the details, the final details. So are we ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Roll call on the motion. Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Correggio is absent. Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso? Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
No.
No. Counselor Penta?
No.
No. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. The motion passes. Calendar item number five, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the mayor request the traffic commission and the school department to look into the feasibility of placing a crossing guard at Mountain Avenue and Broadway at the request of area residents.
Counselor Guanasso?
Thank you, Mr. President. Area residents have contacted me about the accident rate potential at the intersection of Mountain and Broadway. And one particular parent is very outraged to the fact that a while back, this was addressed. And the reason given was, it's high school kids. They don't pay attention to the crossing guard. Well, we've got to make the majority of those students pay attention. We can't just say, walk away from them and say, well, they won't pay attention. This is a serious matter. This parent is outraged to the fact that that was the answer that was given by the school department. I don't accept that answer. And I want to make certain that a crossing guard is there. Every student going to school has a right to be protected. And so it's our given right to make sure they're protected. And I ask that this be voted favorably by this council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Riordan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor Guanasso completely. This intersection is getting to be disastrous. I'm going to suggest that the, that more than a crossing guard, I think we need an officer there, honest to God. And the reason is, not so much the children crossing, which is, of course, is the major focus, should be the major focus, but it's getting to the point where the traffic situation, with people essentially parked on Mountain, going to East Mountain, trying to get into the high school at 7:30 in the morning, blocks traffic on Broadway. And it's amazing how little common sense there is. And it's chaotic, though. And I really think it would be, it would be, at the minimum, a crossing guard. But I think it really needs the attention of the Revere Police Department to put even an officer there only for an hour, even just for an hour, would make things go a lot more smoothly. A qualified officer to direct traffic in that. And, and perhaps a crossing guard as well because the crossing guard serves a somewhat different function. And I think both things would be good. But a crossing guard at a minimum is a necessity. Thank you.
Any other councils? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? Vote in so order.
Calendar item number six, the presentation of the legislative bench.
Excuse me. Can we do suspension of rules so we can bring up late motions and late communications, please? Suspension of rules, all in favor? All opposed? Vote in so order.
Late motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the City Council issue certificates of commendation to the Revere Junior Patriots C-Squad Pop Honor Cheerleaders for winning their third consecutive national championship held in Walt Disney World.
Counselor Guanasso?
Mr. President, I will save my comments for the night of the presentation, and I can wish the cheerleaders good luck and goodwill and have a very great holiday as they made our holiday a wonderful event. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Anybody else? Counselor, just FYI, you realize it's going to be under a different legislature when we come in. Okay? So it won't be until next year. So noted. All in favor on the motion? All opposed? Vote in so order. Late communications?
Late communication from the retirement board requesting an increase in the cost of living adjustment base.
Any comments from councils? I would think this is more controversial than not. And by the time we had our committee meetings to discuss this, we're going to be in signed eye. And I'm going to recommend that we place this on file and send it back to the retirement board, asking them to bring it up in the next legislative session. Any issues with that, ladies and gentlemen? No? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? Vote in so order.
The presentation of the legislative bench. In keeping with the custom and tradition of the Revere City Council, the City Council honored six members, six of its members, by placing their names and years of service as members of the City Council on nameplates on the City Council's legislative bench, which sits in the City Council chamber behind the members of the council. To receive the special recognition, city councillors must have served for a decade or more on the City Council. Currently, the names of 19 past and present members of the City Council are on the legislative bench. Six councillors that will be honored tonight are as follows. One, Ward Three City Councillor Arthur F. Guanasso's name is placed on the legislative bench with 26 years of service as a member of the City Council. Councillor-at-Large Robert J. Haas Jr.'s name is placed on the legislative bench with 22 years of service. Councillor-at-Large Anthony T. Zambudo is placed on the legislative bench with 14 years of service. Ward Two City Councillor and 2013 Council President Ira Novoselfsky is placed on the legislative bench with 14 years of service. Ward Five City Councillor John F. Powers's name will be placed on the legislative bench with 13 years and seven months of service. And Ward One City Councillor Richard A. Penta will be placed on the legislative bench with 13 years and three months of service.
Okay. Gentlemen, ladies, I guess I congratulate everybody and me. Yes, please. And I know we've all put a lot of years in and, you know, we love the city of Revere, and that's why we love doing it. And I know that people have shown that... And I know the people have shown that, you know, we care about them, and they appreciate us being here for them by having them vote for us. So I would ask that the councillors that are on the bench proceed over to the bench, behind the bench, so we can take some photographs, then we'll proceed on to the next issue. Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, please. Counselor Zambudo, are you through? Yeah, 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 sure, sure. Come on, just sit down, will you? Madam Clerk.
Unfortunately, Counselor Corregio cannot be here tonight, but otherwise, he would have received a special plaque for his service on, on the council, now that he's an outgoing member of the city council. Thank you.
And we can, we can make that presentation if it comes at the first meeting in January. Thank you.
And we'll move on to family members who have served on the Revere City Council. Former councillor John R. Corregio, John R. Arigo, served on the Revere City Council from 1988 to 1993. His son Brian M. Arigo was first elected to the position of councillor-at-large in November of 2011, and has just completed his first term. Counselor Arigo will begin his second term representing the citizens of Revere in 2014. As father and son, their names will be permanently affixed to the desk of the city council president and the city council chamber.
And I just want everybody to know that we do have a plaque up here, and I invite, I invite John and, and Brian up to the, up to the podium and take some pictures. Madam Clerk. Last item.
And the last item on the agenda this evening is the plaque for the outgoing city council president, Ira Novoselsky. He'll be awarded in honor of his service as president of the Revere City Council for 2013.
Well, Ira, on behalf of your service for the past year, we want to thank you, you've done a fantastic job, and this is for you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Here we go. Ouch. Well, lady and gentlemen, I do want to thank you for the plaque. I want to thank you for the opportunity to allow me to lead the meetings this year, and I want to thank you for all your cooperation and your feelings, and we had a great legislative year, may I say, and I would hope that the next city council that sits up here is as good as we were this year, because we had a lot of good-hearted and healthy discussions, and without any bad blood, and no hard feelings. And we started as friends, and we leave as friends. And we start a next, next year with a new colleague, and we look forward to next season and a very promising year for the City of Revere. And I thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Do I hear a motion? Motion adjourned, signed eye.